I'd like to call the study session to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present. Councilmember Webb is walking in the door. Councilmember Rosansky actually is.
Okay, thank you.
Is, excuse me.
The next item is clarification for items on the consent calendar. Mr. Selich, any items?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hitt.
I do have one. With regard to item number 18, where we're talking about the redistribution of costs for the Upper Bay. Dave, I'm curious what the previous percentages in dollars applicable to Newport Beach were in that chart. If you have it handy, fine, but if you could report on that tonight, that would be good, too.
We'll get that for you for tonight, Mr. Hitt.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Councilmember Daigle, councilmember Gardner.
On item number 10, can you clarify for me? I mean, obviously, this is a serious matter. We want justice done. But I'm, it's the state that is, doesn't the state in murder cases bring, isn't the state the plaintiff, the party of interest?
The state is the prosecutor.
Okay. So I'm just wondering why the state isn't paying for all this research then, and why the city is.
Would you like to introduce yourselves, please, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name's Dennis Perch. I'm a lieutenant in the detective division with the police department. Regarding that contract, the state handles the prosecution, although we handle the investigation. Detective Both or retired Detective Both handled the investigation. It's our responsibility to put on our witnesses. He's also doing a bunch of case prep for this trial. Prior to a murder trial, there are a number of issues that come up, witnesses to be tied down. We are splitting some of that with the district attorney's office, but some of that responsibility falls on our department to handle and investigate. If that answers your question. No, the state does not pay for our end of, or our responsibility to put on this case from our end of it. I'm struggling.
No, that's okay. There essentially are two sets of investigators that are working up cases such as this. They have, the DA has their own investigators, and they rely upon the police department in order to bring forward the evidence that's developed and be prepared to present it. That's where I think our responsibility lies. And they don't pay for us to have those witnesses and the investigators and the people who testify available at trial. They pay for their special investigation that's not specifically related to our workup. Did I answer that question?
You answered it. It still seems peculiar to me. I'll think about it.
Mr. Webb. Done. And I have no items. Thank you very much. The next item is Back Bay Science Center Labs. Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And actually, I do have a couple of informational pieces about the rest of your study session agenda. There are two things we won't cover today, those item four and five. We will spend some time on item three. Item two will be fairly brief, but this would allow you additional time to go into closed session on a couple of items. Plus, we wanted some additional time to speak with individual council members about the citywide speed survey.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm getting a blank stare from Mr. Webb, but does that make sense? Alright, okay. Maybe the city clerk could dim some of the lights for me here. Nice to spend a little bit of time on a good news item, and that is some work that was done in May and June with the Back Bay Science Center. And the mayor asked a little bit about this, and I'm going to tell the story fairly briefly, when he asked, what is going on at the Back Bay Science Center? Are we involved in some of the cutting-edge water quality research? And I'll answer that, too. But let me tell you about a little bit of activity that went on this summer, with the understanding that the goal, as expressed to me by a number of the council members, especially councilmember Daigle and Webb, was, why isn't this place open on weekends? So councilmember Daigle had an idea, a good one, a very good one, to work with MyOcean, who provided some of the funding for this. And we drew up a plan for three weekend days that was to actually set up some upper-level science labs there, initially done by RSVP and sign-ups. And what were developed were seven, instead of CSI, it's ESI, Science Labs, or Ecology Seen Investigation. Those three days were May 23rd, June 5th, and June 12th. So again, those were weekends. So this was a CSI-type mystery lab aligned to the state standards for grade seven to 12. The lab focused on the clapper rail, which is an endangered species. And the case that was set up was what caused a broken clapper rail egg, all hypothetical, of course. The stations were set up in the Back Bay Science Center to analyze evidence, draw conclusions, and solve the mystery. And the suspects were as follows. They were up to, I didn't know that little thing, water tipped over. Cody the Coyote, the two Coopers, their name is not really Cooper, Ricky the Raccoon, this happens to be my dog, Macy, and a couple of potential water quality causes, selenium, which is a hot topic, and then low pH. So the evidence of the exam, and the students would look at DNA, they'd look at simulated selenium, didn't bring any actual selenium in, not that that'd be too awful, pH, we looked at ink, we looked at footprints, fur, hair, and fingerprints. And this is kind of what it looked like with the lab stations. Pictures are a little dark, but you could see a lot of activity going on there. There were seven different stations, from DNA analysis to footprints and fingerprints, fur and hair, selenium. We had about 75 people come through, which is pretty cool. Students, I think, sent back some really good comments. They enjoyed the CSI approach. They liked the DNA lab especially. So there's actually a machine there that allows you to look at DNA and track that. The Villa Park High School teacher that came down, Villa Park is in the watershed, and that's kind of the goal, said it was the best field trip this year. Now, I don't know if she was only able to do one field trip this year, but it's pretty cool that she said that. The student said there was a need for more table space, and that's eventually the goal of the part of the Back Bay Science Center, because some of them did have to do, to wait in line to do the experiments, especially on June 12th. That was the last day. The goal of this is to provide about 36 different lab stations and really have it going. And Fish and Game, one of our partners, is seeking a million-dollar grant to do that, so we'll see how they do. Certainly supportive of that effort. Thank you to the 25 people that helped make this happen, the city with councilmember Daigle and MyOcean, Fish and Game, teachers and community members, the naturalists and friends. These are a picture of the teachers that volunteered their time. Some of them are in the audience. I see Monica, I see Donna, Kathy, and then the leader of the band there was Rita Phillips, who's, wave your hand Rita, who put a lot of time in this to set this up. So just wanted to tell that story for you and for the community, because I think it was a real valuable one, and hopefully will lead to something bigger and better as, if that grant comes through and as the Back Bay Science Center gets used more and more. If you had any questions or comments.
Councilmember Gardner.
There was some thought last fall, I think it was, when recreational services toured the spot of incorporating it at some point as a summer camp site or something for the city as well. Any further thought to that?
There is, actually. So there's a, there's a good segue into a couple of things that are going on. One is that we do assign our Tidepool Rangers, our leader, Michelle Clemente, to that during one of her workdays, so she'll keep it open and take people through. And we're working with Tidepools and Recreation to propose something bigger, maybe even pretty big, to Fish and Game. Fish and Game is still nervous about having a lot of people on the site while they're not there, because it's such a sensitive site. But we, so we need to show a track record, I think we did a little bit with this project, to expand that throughout the next year.
Dave, we had a series of spills this year of stuff that got to the ocean and the bay. Was the Science Center open and operating to be able to make assessments about what was in those spills and how fast they were, they were dissipated and that kind of thing? Or did we have to go someplace else to find that out?
No, most of that testing is all done at the Back Bay Science Center. There are three wings, remember. There's an administrative wing, there's the teaching lab, and then there's the active water quality lab that the county, Orange County Healthcare Agency operates. And that is where all of the collections from all of the water quality samples in Newport Bay and roughly on south, there's a, the Orange County Sanitation District does some ocean water testing in Huntington and Newport's ocean beaches. But when a spill like that happened in Buck Gully, all of that data, all those samples are taken to the lab at the Back Bay Science Center. At the same time, the Science Center is, and the healthcare agency are partners in a project to look at rapid testing. And that would give us a lot faster than the current 24-hour testing that we have now. It would give us potentially four-hour testing, so we don't know a lot faster whether there was contamination at a specific beach.
Thank you. Mr. Webb.
Before we built the Back Bay Science Center, if I remember correctly, they were docents there that told about the Upper Bay and either conducted tours, or you could go in and get information about it. And those don't seem to be there anymore, because the public's all locked out. I noticed the restrooms at Big Canyon have been removed, at least they were a couple of months ago.
We take them out in the summer. They're taking out in the summer, because they're funded by the Orange County Department of Education. But I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I was just curious. I question why we're taking them out, because that's, there's a definite need for that type of thing there. But, but I guess I'm still concerned that we've spent a whole bundle of money and for 75 people to be the only ones that get to benefit, and a substantial portion of those are from Villa Park. I kind of got the impression this was going to be an active facility and resource to our community that would help us look at all these environmental issues. So I'm really still waiting for these wonderful programs to occur, and they're not occurring. All we, all I see is a locked gate every time I go by. I can't imagine how that parking area and buildings can be so sensitive that the public needs to be locked out of this public facility.
You're turning my good news story into a sad news story.
I know. I just, I'm sorry, but I'm really frustrated, and that we've.
He rained on your parade.
I'm sorry, Dave, but it's just, it's frustrating.
No, no, you make a good point, and so let me comment just a little bit about it. The, we, we have three partners in this, and one of our partners, just because of where they are in the pecking order with the state budget, they're, they're just about below, where if you could be the lowest person on the totem pole, Fish and Game would be below that, because that's really the kind of resources it has. So that's why I think we're intrigued by the possibility of getting a grant that would include not just some construction money, but some operating money, because they are concerned about not having someone there to supervise at all times. They, they do have a docent program. The naturalists and friends still have a docent program. It operates at, at different hours and at scheduled kinds of things. You'll have, you'd have to typically look at the website and find out. But you're right, the gates closed a lot. Our goal is to bring it to a point where it's open a lot more. And I did see this as a small step forward, so.
Okay, it's, I, I'm not trying to downplay what you've done. It's just that I, I really feel that that's such a great resource that we
It is.
Need to be able to utilize it a lot more and put together programs. And whether the city has to, to step up and do those things to help out, maybe we need to consider that.
We need a grant from the Webb Foundation.
Yeah, right. Councilmember Daigle?
Wouldn't be very much. We don't have much of them.
Can you fund a bathroom?
Well, I wanted to thank Dave and Rita and MyOcean, you know, really for putting all this together. And I think we can celebrate in that success. I share councilman Webb's frustrations, though, and I think that there is, you know, more than one way to deliver education. And as far as going after grants, they're highly competitive. And for one example, one alternative, for example, I know the mayor's going to give a proclamation this evening to Crystal Cove Alliance. And they're just a well-functioning group, and they've figured out how to utilize a business model in delivering education. So I think that there are some alternatives. And I know, you know, councilman Selich and Rosansky in a previous council really supported the funding of this. So I think we, we need to look for ways to kind of kick it up and consider some alternatives as well.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thanks for coming down tonight.
I'll bring an umbrella next time, Dave.
Is there any, any public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none. The next item is the citywide directional and wayfinding sign program.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Katie Bowden, former Economic Development Department, will, Division will look at this, will present this for us. Let me move.
You need a wayfinding program for the presentation.
I was proficient in the last version. Okay. Good evening. At the June budget sessions, council asked for a background on the citywide directional and wayfinding program, kind of the history and the status of the program to date. There is quite a bit of history on the project, going back to 1997. I won't even begin to tell you how old I was then. But the city and the CVB commissioned a study in 1997 to determine the TOT revenue generated within the city and identify areas of potential growth. Specifically, they were interested in whether or not a conference and convention center was a feasible option for Newport Beach. The report came back saying, no, it was not. However, the, they did recommend that the city take steps towards becoming a more visitor-friendly community. Specifically, the report identified the city's signage, or lack thereof, in terms of directing tourists to specific attractions and neighborhoods within the city. Furthermore, the report identified seven major activity nodes within the city, and felt that in order to enhance the city's TOT and grow that revenue source, it would be a good idea to facilitate travel between those nodes. The citywide wayfinding program, as you'll notice later on in the presentation, specifically does address the areas to be enhanced of Mariners Mile, Coronado Del Mar, Fashion Island, Balboa Island, and the Balboa Peninsula. Both the EDC and the CVB had their recommendation in moving forward with the suggestions in the PKF study, their primary recommendation being that of pursuing a citywide wayfinding program. So wayfinding, what does it mean? Wayfinding is a system of elements that helps people find their way safely and comfortably throughout complex physical environments. The primary purpose is navigation to and from city destinations. There are some aesthetic benefits as well. Simplifying traffic patterns is another benefit, specifically in helping drivers locate and identify easy, convenient parking. Programs such as this typically have a couple of different elements. They include directional signs, as well as city gateway signs and district identification signs. To go down our timeline a little further, in March 2002, city council approved a contract with Hunt Design to develop such a program. There is a great deal of subcommittee and stakeholder input, a lot of design refinement. There was installation of mock-up directional signs throughout the city. Those were of a temporary nature. You can see some of those pictured here. The city also took a look specifically at the mixed master area and installed a pilot program of a more permanent nature in that area. There was further design refinement, mainly looking at arrow sizes and text sizes. Eventually, in September of 2006, city council approved the final designs. The award of what we refer to as phase one of the contract occurred in June of 2007. That was for the installation of the city's gateway signs and their district identification signs, which are basically the monument signs that you see now throughout the city. And in January of 2008, that portion of the contract was completed. So of phase one, those consisted of signs at the westernmost boundary of the city, Benita Canyon Drive, Jamboree Road, MacArthur Boulevard, the Newport Coast Community Center, as well as specifically the districts of Coronado Del Mar and Mariners Mile. Here are some before and after photos of what those signs looked like before and what they look like today. I was hired by the city in early 2008 and took over the project. In May of '08, we amended our contract with Hunt Design for what we're now referring to as phase two of the implementation of the program. Though, that really included refinement of the directional sign package. We had the design, we had generally the number of signs that we were looking to install, and a general idea of where those locations would be. But due to the amount of time that had passed, some areas had moved their locations, such as the CVB and the Nautical Museum. We also really needed to pinpoint the locations, so we did a number of field trips and identified the specific utility poles that those signs would be mounted on. Those locations were cleared with utilities and with traffic. The bid package was prepared, and then in January 2009, it was pulled due to budget reductions. In this past year, staff resurrected the project and submitted a budget request for this fiscal year. I should note that all three of the geographic bids have expressed support for the project. It's important to them, because it identifies their villages and their locations, and they feel that drivers might have an easier time finding where they're located. Specifically, Marine Avenue was really looking forward to some signs directing folks to Balboa Island. In fact, they asked city councils authorization to move ahead with the installation of three of those signs, in the case that the city did not move forward with a comprehensive installation. We're basically waiting to see what happens before deciding whether or not to move forward with that portion separately. Citywide, the program consists of 69 signs. Approximately 28 of those signs are located on the peninsula. But those signs include geographical areas and villages, tourist attractions, such as just the beaches and the piers, the ferry, Fashion Island, the Nautical Museum, Art Museum, Crystal Cove State Park. They also direct visitors to public parking and coastal access areas, public institutions, and then some just general directional signs, such as how to get to Coast Highway. I've included a couple sample pages out of the program, just so you can get an idea of where some of the signs are proposed. Tried to just pull out a few that were representative of the, the package as a whole. You can see how we're proposing to mount the signs. In addition, staff was asked to take a look at the engineer's estimate that was used to submit the 2010-2011 budget request. We estimated $300,000 at the time. Since that time, we've been sharpening our pencils, and Public Works has revised their engineer's estimate to $217,000. Part of that included reducing the contingency by quite a bit. In addition, we have about $35,000 left encumbered in what was remaining of the Hunt Design contract, mainly because the scope of that contract changed somewhat, in that we had difficulty in locating district and gateway signs off of Coast Highway near Reef Point Drive and, and Newport Coast. So we had some cost savings there. So counting the $15,000 that we expect in construction administration costs for Hunt Design, and then the additional $20,000 left over, that gets us to approximately $185,000 budget request for the current fiscal year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Katie, what does that work out to per sign, cost per sign?
There are 69 signs.
$2,927 per sign.
I have a more specific estimate here. There are a couple different sizes of signs. For, they range from about $1,750 to $2,500 per sign. There's a cost for mobilization, for traffic control, for permitting the removal of existing signs, and construction administration, spare hardware, and as-built drawings as well.
Mr. Kiff, did you have something?
No, I was making sure Mr. Webb, what, you were doing just a flat
I'm just doing 69 into
Division.
Two, two hundred and two thousand.
Yeah, so that's the net total, fully loaded cost of the sign.
That's $2,927. I was just curious, that works out to be $103 a square foot, assuming you have about a 20-square-foot sign, that's one that's six feet by four feet, an oval. I was curious, how much does our sign shop cost to make a 20-square-foot sign?
I'm afraid I can't answer that question. However, I've been told that our sign shop would not be able to do this work, that they would need to contract it out.
And why is that?
Mark's coming up. Throw him under the bus.
Alright.
It's not my job.
That's a new profit center, Mark.
We, we don't normally make signs in that quantity and that size. We've taken our sign shop personnel, we've given them, we've reclassified them as part of the new budget, and they're more facility maintenance tax. A project like this would take months in the shop, so we wouldn't.
We've had 10 years so far. What's a few extra months?
Oh, if you, if I've got 10 years, I'd put it together. But no, it's just too big a project for the shop.
Mr. Rosansky.
And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what the cost per foot would be if we did try and put something together like this.
You can get almost structural concrete retaining walls for that price.
I'm not sure where the estimate.
Remember, too, this is something that would be put out to bid, so we'd let the marketplace look at it. look at it.
So is there $185,000 in your budget for, if we decided we did want to move forward with this?
It's not allocated, so.
Well, I know it's not in the budget now. Do you have $185,000 in your back pocket to pay for this?
If, if that was your direction, to go back and look at the budget and see what might be available, I'm happy to, to look at that.
Mr. Henn.
Well, I guess my view is to go back and look in the nooks and crannies for unneeded encumbrances and this and that. My point of view would be, we are going to bid this. We'll find out what the lowest cost is to finish this project out. We're 60% of the way into this project. Katie did not mention that the, well, she might have mentioned that the Economic Development Committee was solidly behind proceeding with this, but so is the Visit Newport Beach people. Gary Sherwin made quite an unequivocal, unequivocal statement to the EDC Executive Committee one day when this was being discussed, that he was, he felt very strongly that this was a worthwhile project, and I believe it was endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce too. So, you know, we're very deep into this. It's been almost 10 years to get to where we are. It seems like we ought to finish it off if there is some available funds there, if we can find some or perhaps keep the project in our pocket until some does come up that doesn't put pressure on the general fund operating budget. If there's a way to find funding aside from that, I would be in favor of proceeding with this.
Councilmember Greg.
Well, I guess if we waited 10 years, there isn't an urgency to it too. I just wonder, and I'd like, I don't know whether this was discussed at the EDC, but is this the best, we have $185,000 we're going to try to find. Is that the best we can do in terms of priorities for our businesses and our visitors? Is there something else that we might want to spend that money on that would be even more valuable to them perhaps? So I don't know whether that was considered, but it's a question I would like to at least be considered.
Mr. Webb.
Is there any way that, since this is very strong and visitor-serving, that we can tap into transient occupancy tax funds that would perhaps be going towards tourist-related facilities?
Well, remember, remember our TOT goes to the general fund, except for the portion that goes to visitnewportbeach.com. So if your question is the latter.
Can we get at least a donation from them for that, if that would be an appropriate thing to do?
That would, might also, that and also the bids, I mean, the Balboa Island bid is obviously interested and willing to put some money forth. Perhaps the Coronel Mar bid is also, I don't know. But that, there might be some ways of, if this were considered very important, of also trying to help, help fund.
Well, I'd be willing to see us go to bid and get bids on this to see what it looks like, although I will say that I bought my wife a Picasso the other day for the money that these signs cost. So I'm a little concerned about the cost, but, you know, we need to get this project ultimately done. And I'm depending on the private sector to drive the cost lower than what we're seeing here.
You know, one of the things I'm curious about is, is that an oval sign is not a standard sign in the industry, and I'm just wondering if that might not be part of the extra cost in that it's not an off-the-shelf size that you just take out and.
Caltrans Green?
Well, no, no, no. You can get any color of reflective material to go on an aluminum plate backing, which is what we use, what we have, street signs are made that way usually. You have some sort of, in that laminated plastic that goes on and you silk-screen the sign with the, with your reflective colors. And I believe you can probably get any number of colors for reflective material. I just can't imagine where the money is going, and I'm wondering if maybe we haven't gone to an exotic design that couldn't be simplified, still coming up with the same shape and colors, maybe not necessarily the same shape, because if, if it costs an extra $100 for each sign to get an oval shape instead of a square foot, I mean, instead of a rectangular shape, is it worth the extra money?
If it's only an extra $100 bucks a sign, I'd say don't mess with it. I mean, talking about $6,900. I agree with you that it probably, in retrospect, maybe a square sign would have been more profitable. By the time they redesign the sign with the lettering and the, and the look of it, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've, I've seen the signs around town. I'm not that thrilled with them. They're hard, you know, I live here and I have a hard time finding them and reading them, and I don't think they're very good signs, quite honestly, now that I'm thinking about it, backed, my experiences with it. And it's like, you know, we're going to throw more money at these things. You know, I wanted to let it go to bid too, but I agree with Don. I think, you know, almost three grand a sign is, it's a lot of money, especially in these times. I gotta believe that we can spend $200,000 more wisely.
At the very least, we need to look at the structural problems that caused a droop.
Like the one out here?
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, doing things to help stimulate business ought to be pretty high on our priority list. What I'd like to understand a little bit better though is with that reference grid, where traffic is being directed? I mean, sort of what's the, sort of what's the flow here as far as where we want people to be going?
Katie, is, is that in the larger document? Maybe we could share that with the public and the council or?
I think there's like a reference grid, maybe five or so slides in there.
Yeah, there is a reference grid.
And maybe you have another different map.
But, you know, it really would all depend on the visitor and where they're coming from and where they'd like to go. So. The, the signs are concentrated on Coast Highway, on the northern section of Newport Boulevard, Jamboree, there's some on Newport Coast Drive. So that would be the, the concentration on the peninsula that they'd be concentrated off Newport or Balboa.
Okay, and then these ones up in the upper right, is that part of MacArthur or where is that there? Where are you, what, I guess, traffic floor are you trying to capture?
That would be for those vehicles entering the city.
Okay.
Is that at MacArthur or Jamboree?
I believe those are Jamboree. Yes, those are on Jamboree.
Okay.
Well, there are other senses from the council as to go out to bid, see what they look like versus, I don't know if we even proposed an alternate bid item that was a more rectangular device. I hate to be having us designing, and Steve, if you have any thoughts.
You know, one of the things, you know, it might, might look funny, but it might work, is just taking that circular decal and putting it on a rectangular blank and having, you know, essentially a white or an off-white border of some kind to see how that looks. But that's, I mean, I think Councilman Webb is correct. I think what's driving a lot of the costs is the custom sign blank. There's a lot of money in that and then the, obviously the effort to mount it correctly.
Are the signs, are they an aluminum sign or are they wood signs?
They're aluminum signs.
Selich.
Guess I've been around here too long. I was here in 97 when this all started. I don't know how old Katie was, but I was a lot younger then too. You know, this is probably about the third or the fourth time this has come up, and it's the same kind of questions, same kind of discussions, and we never move it on. We hired the consultant, for better or worse, it's the signs that we picked, and, you know, I think we ought to get the program done, put them out to bid. It's a good competitive bidding environment to get stuff like this down, see what we can come up with. Yeah, there's some problems with grouping and the signs bending. Let's figure out how to get that taken care of and get on with the program. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to every couple of years bring it up and then ask a whole bunch of the same questions all over again when it's been studied to death. Let's just get it done.
Councilmember Greg.
Well, as I say, maybe there's a reason it hasn't gone forward very much, and I think Steve touched on it. Part of it is, I have to agree that I find them hard to read, and I do know my way around, and I can't imagine. And I know, we probably don't want to go back and redesign because we've got some up, but they aren't as effective as they might be. And as I say, maybe one reason it's taken so long is just that at the bottom, there's a sense of dissatisfaction with the sign itself.
Mr. Henn.
My guess is it's been a matter of inertia and lack of a champion that's caused most of this delay here over the last four or five years. And so I agree with Councilman Selich. Let's, let's get this done. Let's be done with. We had a consultant that we consulted with on the font size. We, we examined the font size, we signed off on all of that. I'd hate to go back and try to do some sort of redesign. I'd like to move this forward to an up or down vote, and I would suggest that we go ahead and bid it out the way it's designed. I wouldn't mind, there was a suggestion sort of along the lines of, well, if the Chamber and Visit Newport Beach thinks it's so important in the bids, maybe they ought to contribute some of the cost. I wouldn't mind going back to them and suggesting for, to see if they would like to put some money where their mouths are about all of this and come back with a proposal. Here's the cost, we bid it out, here's what, who's willing to contribute to move it forward, here's the net cost to the city. Up or down, are we going to do it? That's the way I'd like to see it.
Do you think you have enough direction on this, David?
I support.
I support Councilman Hen's proposal. Just bring it to a vote, get a number, we'll either vote for it or we won't.
I do have direction now, thank you.
I, I don't want to redesign the signs either. Either we're going to put them up the way they are or we're not going to do it at all.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
WR building, live on Balboa Boulevard, down within the bit. I am encouraged with everything I have heard here this evening. I just sat here and counted, there are 20 signs from 21st Street down to Main Street in our area. A lot of the little green signs now are very small. You don't see them, whether they're blue. I like the blue, I can see them. I can't see the green. We're all different and whatnot. But one of the things that I, I brought this up last night with the Central Newport Beach Community Association, there was some interest. There are a couple of signs that we are concerned with and were brought up by the meeting we had in the council chambers here chaired by Mr. Hen in reference to some traffic problems. There'd be no more signs. I think there's some simplicity in some of the signs. There's arrows for parking, for example, down on Adams, it says sports fishing, parking, and restaurants. There's one restaurant there. You go down to Bay Avenue, the parking structure has overfilled traffic off of trying to get onto the ferry coming down Bay and whatnot. It's, it's a mess in there certain times of the year. We would like the opportunity, the final deal to, to have some, some input, but I think Tony Bryant and Mr. Hen are already working on, on some of the issues. But there's one sign in particular that as I interpret, they're going to replace it with a bigger one that could be moved back and hopefully help eliminate some of our problems. But the other thing, the residents between the two piers, about 75% of us the last couple of years have voted to underground our utilities. We're going to be down, the point has got rid of their utilities. And the one thing in the area, because of that alone, I feel there's a lot of people out there trying to spruce up and clean up their messes. I think Colton Fortsman has got a workload with some of the things that a lot of us are creating and trying to bring the village independence up back to where it was years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on that item. Are there public comments on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session.